All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Orange County School Board. I want to thank you for joining us tonight. We have a number of wonderful recognitions that I'm so looking forward to. And I want to say before we get into the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, I love it when our young scholars show up and allow us to be, allow us to recognize them. But I especially love it when they are so respectful and they show up in their Sunday best. And it's still from Billy Crystal, y'all look marvelous out there. You really do. All of our kids look so sharp out there, just thank you. With that, I'd like to ask you to please stand and join me in a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Well, again, welcome to the Orange County School Board. Tonight, we are going to be recognizing students for their outstanding work in science, technology, engineering, and math, and another group of students for their success in media production. I'd like to begin this recognition by introducing our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Scott Fritz, to tell us about the Sunshine State Scholars Program. Dr. Fritz, welcome.
Board members, audience, for a number of years, the state of Florida has recognized the Sunshine State Scholar Program as the best and the brightest of the juniors that have been accomplished in the STEM fields. Each high school was invited to nominate one junior who excels in STEM classes, as well as overall academics. Very happy, Board, to say that we have all 19 high schools represented, their principals are here, and OCVS is here as well. Since OCPS is such a large school district, we're actually allowed two scholars. These two STEM students will represent OCPS in May at the state event, accompanied by their parents and a teacher of their choice. At this event, they will interact with STEM industry leaders from across the state, Florida colleges, universities, and other STEM industry leaders. At this time, we're going to call up our students, and we're going to ask their principals to come up with them. Ms. Tindall will be doing the names. Ms. Tindall?
And board members, I believe. Dr. Fritz, I think you'd like us to circle around to the front, and we're going to shake hands, is that right, Ms. Bobinski? And then we'll take a picture. All right, so, board members, let's go on to the front. Yes, please.
I'm going to read off the names of all of our school nominees for this recognition. They are the scholar for their particular school, whether they're here or not, so that we can all recognize their hard work, and have their principal, if they're in attendance, to come up and collect their award. Okay? We're going to start with Colonial High School. We have Christian Sexton. Here comes, here comes Mr. Martinez. (Applause) Principal Jose Martinez. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
From Lake Nona High School, Jarrett Bullion. Principal Maggie Nampon. (Applause) Okay, our scholar from Oak Ridge High School couldn't be here tonight due to a conflict with a dual enrollment class. Imagine that. The professor wouldn't let him miss, but we certainly want to recognize Dr. Leanne Bradshaw as principal, and our student is Nicholas Julian Grant. (Laughter) Okoye High School is going to be next, just to give our principal a heads up. Our scholar from there is Cameron Wilson. (Applause) So our principal from Olympia High School here, I didn't see everyone. There we go, okay. Our student couldn't be here with us this evening, but that student is Alexander Lee. (Applause) From West Orange High School, Benjamin Thompson. Okay, we have our assistant principal here tonight. Thank you. Here's your administrator behind you. There you go. Thank you. East River High School will be next. Where's Heather Hilton, our principal? Our student is Karen Brooks. (Applause) Our scholar student. Okay, Timber Creek High School, principal, are you ready? Your scholar is Michael Hoffman. (Applause) Your scholar is Sasha Moore. Sasha was unable to be with us tonight. Boone High School. Our Boone High School scholar is Emma McLean. (Applause) They're having a lot of fun up there. Okay. Dr. Phillips High, well, we've got to take a picture, hang on. Okay. Dr. Phillips High School is next. Your scholar is Philip Corey. (Applause) Our assistant principal is here with us tonight. Principal Waldron, your nominee, your scholar, is Emmanuel Paul. Oh, there she is. Thanks, Rod. Apopka High School. Your scholar is Benjamin Schultz. (Applause) There comes our principal, Nathedy Moody. (Applause) Nathedy? Nathedy Moody? Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. From Evans High School. Evans High School, we have Tenushri Bhamik. (Applause) Here's your administrator behind you. There you go. Wakava High School is next. Race Maine. (Applause) Race was unable to be here with us this evening. Those are our 19 traditional high schools. We also have Orange County Virtual School being represented tonight with a nominee. Their scholar is Abigail Hockenberry. And here comes your principal. Hang on, Abigail, here's your principal. She may not have ever met her before. Actually, I told a little story. We have three more schools that we haven't mentioned yet, because from those schools we have our Sunshine State Scholar alternate and our two Sunshine State Scholars. Coming to us from Freedom High School with an interest in biomedical engineering related to cancer research and oncology, inspired by his grandfather, we have Mehdi Bakary. (Applause) Now, our, where, as Dr. Fritz says, we have two Sunshine State Scholars, being a large district. We have from, yes, that's right, from University High School. Let me give your principal time to get up here. Inspired by an astrophysicist named Neil deGrasse Tyson, and with an interest in aerospace engineering, we have Omar Abdul Berry. (Applause) And last, but certainly not least, our other Sunshine State Scholar coming to us from Cypress Creek High School. Here comes your principal. With an interest in being a neurosurgeon, inspired by both her parents, we have Samya Kapoor. (Applause) That's just Race Maine. Okay, that's it. (Laughter) Mary Good, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. Sure, thank you. Good job. Thank you. There you are. Good job. (Laughter) None of us achieve our triumphs in life without the support of others who love us
and nurture us and care for us and provide support for us in the home. So I'd like to ask all the extremely proud parents of these scholars to please stand. And, kids, join me in recognizing your parents. (Applause) Our next group of students that we will be recognizing have succeeded in the category of film and TV production. The 2015 Jim Harbin Student Media Festival Award winners from five high schools and one middle school. These talented students produced award-winning videos in the statewide competition. Mrs. Gordon is very excited about this award. Feel like I'm at the Oscars. The Media Festival provides K-12 students the opportunity to show their work and have it critiqued by a panel of expert judges on several, several levels of the competition. The festival has 11 different categories, including animation, book trailer, comedy, drama, PSAs, and more. And Ms. Bobinski, next year, when I do this, my wife and I, we love the Oscars, we're going to put together a shorts compilation of some of their winning work next year. When I saw the script today, I thought, boy, I would have loved to have seen a compilation of some of the clips. I bet they're incredible. At the high school level, can we have the students from Timber Creek please stand, Adam Ferguson and Emily Mouser, as well as their teacher, Cameron Stevens? And board members, I think what we'll do is after we have them each stand and recognize them, we're going to go down in front again and shake their hands as well in any photos they may want to take. And they won, excuse me, I'm sorry, they won first place in the animation category for their production called Dress Code. I bet that was great. I would love to see that. I just like the title. In second place, could we please have the students from Okoye High School and Winter Park High School please stand as I call your names, from Okoye, Eric Mohino and teacher Derek Charleston? If you could stand, let us recognize you. Are they here?
Probably working on next year.
Eric's video, is his principal here? Eric's video was in the instructional category, and it was called How to Make an Instructional Video. Very clever. It's a future comedy director there. From Winter Park High School, Ananda Belowoski and Abigail Marcel with her teacher, Michelle Gerber. Could you stand, please? (Applause) Amanda and Abigail, their video was in the PSV category, and it was called Hero. PSV, okay, I'm going to show my ignorance. What does that stand for?
Public Service Video.
Public Service Video, thank you. I see other heads nodding out there. What's that?
Public Service.
Okay, cool, cool. And our third-place winners, could you please stand, Boone High School and Olympia High School, and I'll call your names, as I call your name, please stand, from Boone High School, Kyle Christensen, Zachary Jordan Morales, and Maya Stanton with teacher Robin Brillante. (Applause) Their video was in the book trailer category, and it was called, wow, what a great title. I'm dying to see this one. Beneath the Meth Moon. No one can say our kids are not provocative, if nothing else. I actually thought that was a misprint at first. From Olympia, Kyra San Augustin, Katie Sanderson, Shelley Davis, Jericho Torres Leschnick, Kahu Fahafan, Eric Kerdak, Markald Schwann Green, Christina Kim, and their teacher, Robert Carmody. Could they all please stand? (Applause) Their video took third place in the news show category, the April 3rd edition of the Titan TV Morning News Show. So congratulations to all of our high school students and teachers, and we also have some outstanding middle school students that we're going to recognize who shined at the festival as well. Could we have the students from Maitland Middle School please stand as I call your names? First-place winner Chandler Farber won for the instructional video category. His video. Chandler's video was called How to Make a Hero Sandwich. Also in first place in the animation category was Reagan Landrum and Gabby Chepetnik. (Applause) These just get better. Their video was titled What Should I Wear? It's an ongoing debate in my household every morning. And Maitland Middle also took second place in the news feature category, as well as the documentary category, for the news feature called Mousetraps in Motion. Could Justin Winningham, excuse me, and Olivia Garrett please stand? (Applause) And last, but not least, the documentary second-place winners for their video titled More Than Just a Test. Could we have Brooke Berry, Ryan Berry, Grace Douglas, and Avery Douglas, along with their wonderful teacher Lori Farber, who stands out every year during this festival? Please stand and let us recognize you as well. (Applause) And to all of our students who won awards, congratulations. I think what we're going to do as a board is, I know the board would like to shake the hands of these students as well, so we're going to stay up here, we're going to do a lean over, where we lean over like we're vultures, across the table, and shake your hands that way. Can I have all the students just sort of follow in front of us and allow us to shake your hands that way? I know that wasn't the best analogy, was it? (Laughter) (Applause) great kids, and you've raised children who are role models for their peers at their home schools, and that is so incredibly, incredibly important, more than you know. So can I have all the parents of these students who won awards in the video and film categories please stand and let us recognize you as well? (Applause) All right, also tonight, we have one final recognition. We have some very, very special guests, tremendous partners of ours here at Orange County Public Schools, our friends from CFE Federal Credit Union. Representatives from CFE Federal Credit Union are here tonight for a check presentation made possible through the My CFE for Schools debit program. And through this program, CFE Federal Credit Union donates five cents to the district every time a My CFE for Schools affinity debit card is used for a signature-based purchase. And before I announce their names and have them stand, and then, board members, I believe we're going to go down in front, Ms. Bobinski, for the check presentation. Is that correct? I'd just like to also say to our audience, and also to folks watching at home, and go off-script a little bit, I'm going to embarrass them a little bit, but everything from Support Person of the Year Dinner, Teacher of the Year Dinner, State of the Schools, our Arts Appreciation, and our individual schools, anything that Orange County Public Schools needs, and all of those events are provided to us free of any tax dollars completely whatsoever, and most of them are completely free of charge to the honorees that we're recognizing, and that's all due to the generosity of our partners at CFE Federal Credit Union. So thank you for that. (Applause) With that, we are proud to welcome and introduce the President and CEO of CFE Federal Credit Union, Mr. Joseph Melburn, Kevin Dougherty, Executive VP of Operations, Eddie Sinabria, Vice President, Regulatory Compliance, Suzanne Deutsch, VP of Marketing, and Cassie Roach, Senior Marketing Specialist. Welcome, and if you'd like to approach the podium, Mr. Melburn and any of your colleagues, we'd love to hear from you for this wonderful check presentation.
I only have a two-page speech, so. This program started in 2009, so we've been doing this for six years. This year's check is $60,400. (Applause) Since we started the program, we have given OCPS a total of $346,300. So we, we'd just like to say we appreciate all of those members of CFE that participate in the program and hope and help the district earn this money, so we, I just want to say thank you to the board and appreciate it. Thank you very much. (Applause)
(Inaudible) 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 This is more of a generational joke, but I always want to take one of those checks and like Happy Gilmore, try to go through a drive-thru with it. Your parents get that joke, none of the kids in here would, but classic film reference. All right, with that, we are going to go ahead and pause. It is a school night. I'm sure you guys are brilliant scholars, because you work your tails off studying, so we're going to let you go home and study. So thank you for coming down here tonight. (Applause) (Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
It's under the professional staff contracts of the conversation and it talks about retirees and retired retirees, which is a... Right. It doesn't say anything about where they get put on the... I mean, one of the issues is where they get put.
All right, let's go ahead and get going with our business portion of our meeting. Preliminary announcement, any individual who would like to address an item on our consent or our non-consent agenda may do so by completing a yellow speaker form at the board table. You can get that form up here at the far left-hand side of the dais. In fact, there are some sitting out there now. You can hand it to Ms. McGill down there at Board Services. When that agenda item for which you've signed up to speak comes before us, I will call on you to speak at that time. You will have three minutes to address the board. We would ask that when that time comes, you start with your name and your address and then we're always eager to hear what folks have to say on our agenda items. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
Chairman, one change to the agenda, item 4.0, your personnel agenda. Employee initials SF is changed to a resignation. Employee HS is being removed to be brought back at a later date.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, any changes from legal?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I find cause to amend the agenda as suggested by the superintendent. Can I have a motion to do so? It's been moved by Ms. Cobert. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Kittle. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye, aye, all opposed nay. Show the agenda adopted. We do have some newly appointed administrators to recognize tonight. This is also one of our favorite parts of the meeting because we get to recognize the accomplishments of these men and women who have been promoted. Ms., Dr. Jenkins, let me turn it over to you for that, ma'am.
Thank you. We have Dejanaera Pena, who was an instructional coach in our ELL multilingual services. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Shingle Creek Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Try not to cry now. Well, first and foremost, I would like to thank Superintendent Jenkins, Ms. Gordon, and the board, Mrs. Schuler, Ms. Supernard, for providing me with this opportunity. I would also like to thank those who are with me here supporting me and who always offer me their continued support. I have my director for multilingual services, Rose Santiago, our senior administrator, Dr. Peters, my mother, Doris Rodriguez, my aunt Nancy Rodriguez, my daughter, Delani, my sister Day, and a good friend, Josue Morales. So I'm eager to begin my administrative career at Shingle Creek, empowering my students and leading them to success. Thank you.
Well, congratulations. And let me turn it over to your board member, Mrs. Gordon. Mrs. Gordon.
Well, I really want to say thank you and welcome, Ms. Pena. We welcome you to Shingle Creek, one of my favorite schools. All of them are, but Shingle Creek is very special, very special to me. So welcome aboard and I look forward to working with you. And thank you. You bring a nice, gifted talent there that we really need and so we really appreciate you. And I thank Dr. Jenkins for that appointment. Thank you.
Well, again, congratulations, Ms. Pena. Can we have that beautiful daughter of yours stand up? We can barely see her back there. Let's give her a round of applause. Alani, thank you for coming down here. You should be very proud of your mama tonight. You know, I always like to say it to our newly appointed administrators, this appointment is really an important moment in your career. It represents one single word from this board and that word is trust. It means that we trust your leadership abilities. We trust your judgment. Most importantly, we trust you with our community's children. So you should be very proud as, you know, it should be your entire family of what you've accomplished. Thank you. And with that, it is a school night and we have to get Alani back to her books as well. So if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to leave at this time. If you want to stick around and watch the sausage be made, you're welcome to do that, too. Personally, I'd go home and study myself.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we have a whole series of public hearings, various policies. Dr. Jenkins, should I turn it over to you first? Okay, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, board members. As you will recall, we have several policies being adjusted, most of them based purely on legislative action with corrective language being put in place for the policies before you tonight, which you may move forward with a single vote according to our General Counsel and Parliamentarian. On January 4th, the policies were sent to CTA for comments. On January 10th, the policies were advertised. On January 19th, they were presented at Cabinet. On January 21st, you had your rural development workshop. That brings us to your February 9th School Board Meeting for any additional action. Chairman? And I'm sorry, and we do have staff available. Amy Enville was the counsel who works on your policies along with staff. If there are any questions or comments.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, anything to add to that? Okay, so board members and Mr. Rodriguez, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we probably, since we're adopting revised board policies, we need to take up each one individually. Or can we do them collectively? We can do it as a group?
You can, Mr. Chair. And more importantly, because these policies are all related to HR and ER, employee relations and human relations issues, they're certainly, their subject matter is closely related, but you don't need an independent vote. The only thing is just make sure that there's any public comment on any of those. You need to request that now.
Okay. So at this time, has any member of the public come to testify before us or give public comment on Agenda Items 3.01 through 3.10, which are the various revisions to the board policies reflected therein? No? Okay. And just so that anybody may be watching who's aware of this, we've really brought, done a wonderful job, I think personally. We brought on a staff council to do a revision of all of our board policies, many of which have not been revised for, in some cases, decades. And it was well overdue. So, Mr. Rodriguez and Dr. Jenkins, thank you for your leadership on this issue. Something that we've needed to do. And also, we do this every year to bring them in compliance with changes to state statutes and because our board policies also have to be in compliance with state law. So with that, board members, can I entertain a resolution or a motion, excuse me, a motion to adopt proposed changes to board policies 3.01 through 3.10 in the agenda? It's been moved by Ms. Gould. It's been seconded by Ms. Moore. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? All right, everybody understand if you vote yes, you're voting to adopt all of the proposed changes on 3.01 to 3.10. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye, aye, all opposed nay. Show those board policies adopted. All right, thank you, Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Rodriguez. All right, we are now on the consent agenda. I don't have any speaker cards on the consent agenda. Mrs. Gordon. Who's that? Is that old? I'm sorry.
That's old. Thank you.
All right, I'll get it later. Give me one second, board members, because I want to make sure I don't... Okay, that's 1601. Okay. You know, there is one thing, and I had notes in here and I think that they got switched out right at the start of the meeting. Yes. You know, forgive me, board members, I just, I want to make a little bit of a very brief 30-second speech because there's one item in the consent agenda that really bothers me and I'm probably just spitting in the wind even complaining about it. But if you look in the grant documents, there's 5 point, I think it was 5.1 million. My notes had it written down. $5.1 million for the grant program for the state of the Florida. Florida for the, what are they calling it? Dr. Jenkins, Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship Program. So, you know, we've really been put between a rock and a hard place as a school board, a place that none of us want to be. I think I feel pretty comfortable saying that this entire board thinks that that program is ill-conceived, poorly thought out, a complete waste of state tax dollars that could have been better put to instructional personnel salaries across the board, especially in light of the merit pay system that the state has put into place. So to reward teachers based on an SAT that they may have taken 15, 20, 25 years ago makes no more sense than rewarding doctors based on their MCAT scores, lawyers on their LSAT scores, engineers on their SAT scores. I could go on and on and on, or even me on my high school human anatomy score. It just makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. So we're going to vote to adopt this consent agenda. We're not about to turn away $5.1 million from the state on personal friends and professional friends with a lot of teachers. And as ill-conceived as I think it is, for those teachers who will be getting it, it is a substantial check. But I just wanted to say on the record, I think it's probably the dumbest thing that the state legislature has done in the past 30 or 40 years. And I rarely use that kind of language, but I don't think there's any other way to describe it. Ms. Cobert?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for bringing that up. I just want to say that I concur wholeheartedly. I think this is one of the worst things that our legislature has put out. It's an insult to our teachers. I would much rather see that money go into raises across the board or even scholarships for students who want to go into the teaching profession because lord knows we need that, too. So I stand with you, other members of the board, and I stand with our teachers on that. Just had to go on record to say that. And there's one last point that the speakers earlier, that we hear you. We hear you on that. And this is just, it's another example of legislation that is not doing anything to help our teachers. And we do hear you. Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for addressing that. I really appreciate it. I did address this as a teacher in Osceola County, and I also addressed it as a board member in Orange. And I would like to see, if I, I'm not going to ask Dr. Jenkins' team to do it, but I would like to know at a later date and to compile, just to show in addition to letters that we have written to our state, because it is to reward Florida teachers who have been evaluated as highly effective. So, and who have earned college interest exam scores that indicate they were exceptionally well-prepared for college courses. And I do want to state that this really was an insult to those of us who started teaching in the 60s. My first class was in 1967. And then I came here and in Orange, and I taught at Orange Center in 1968. We did not have in South Carolina an interest test of the SAT. And I wrote that to the state legislator to let them know. We were graded and we were paid on what we called the National Teacher Exam. And I wanted to point out to the lawmaker that this is a major lawsuit. This is an insult to those of us who may be highly effective and did not get anything and continue to remain highly effective under this growth plan and being paid on it. I just think it's ridiculous. And I, too, wanted to make the comment earlier that I know my colleagues in my building. Every teacher know who is a good teacher in their building. And a lot of, some of these that are being awarded may be highly effective because of that particular day the administrator was in the room. But I'm willing to bet you their children and the kids in that class may not be as effective based on that. So it is really a detrimental thing to those of us who have chosen this profession as our life goal and want to remain in it, that some of these people can get this based on a score and based that they are highly effective. But it is very disappointing. I did not accept it. In Osceola County, for the teachers at my school, we all stuck together. We all go down together because we felt that at that particular time, April Wasier as our president, that we all are highly effective and effective teachers and we try our best to do good under a growth plan system. So this, to me, is a waste of money. And I asked them if they would have just given a million dollars to each county. And I think somebody even said one county didn't even need a million dollars because they were just that small. I think, I may have spoken with Scott Howard on it, but I think that they could have given everybody, every county, at least a million dollars for teacher professional development and to help us all become highly effective, 100% highly effective, 98 to 100%. And this money could have gone into professional development for teachers. So I want the record to reflect that. It is very disappointing. However, like Dr. Jenkins said, you really don't want to turn away any money. But the money is not going to the children. The money is going to that particular individual teacher. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mrs. Robinson?
I, too, just wanted to support everybody who's already made comments that I'm also think it's a silly bill that was passed and it's a silly way to spend our money. There's got to be 50,000 ways that are better than this to spend those dollars for education. I mean, what if, what if they use those dollars to award, since we're going to have a teacher shortage and we know we're having a teacher shortage, and they award it to some of our graduating seniors that'll stay in the state of Florida and go to one of our wonderful colleges and major in education? You could give them $10,000 a year, every year or something. I mean, there's just so many other ways, so many other ways they could use these dollars. So I, too, am very, very disappointed and thank you for pointing that out so we could all back you on that one.
Ms. Flynn.
I, too, just wanted to say I concur with you, Chair. And I think this continues to lend more support to our recommendation at the last board meeting or work session that we look at the research and data from merit pay and bonus pay and look at its effect on student achievement, you know, see what that correlation is. And I know Ms. Dormel, is she still here? Yeah, she offered to give us, you know, some push-thum research towards us, too. So I'm looking forward to receiving that. And I know we're going to have a whole bunch of it from the, a whole bunch, that's a lot of it from our staff as well. So, thank you.
Ms. Gould.
I know that Ms. Flynn's going to be doing a legislative report a little bit later in the meeting, but we were up in Tallahassee last week in discussing many turns in the law that are similar to this, that don't quite make sense at the local level. And for those listening at home, we need the advocacy. We need your voice. We need... We need people to understand that we have highly valued teachers, that we need the ability to recognize lots of different talents, all of which were listed here tonight, measurable, and many of the immeasurable ways, which is hard to attach money to, that change children's lives. But that, that education needs to continue with our legislators and not just from school board members, but community members and teachers alike.
All right, well, thank you, board members, for all those comments. All excellent. Can I have at this time a motion to adopt a consent agenda? It's been moved by Vice Chair, or Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Ms. Moore. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right, we are on 16.01. So at this time, I'm going to recess the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board and call to order, excuse me, the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. First action item is requesting approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated November 17, 2015. Can I have a motion to do that? It's been moved by Ms. Gould, seconded by Ms. Moore, that we approve the minutes of the corporation dated November 17, 2015. All those, is there any discussion or debate of that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the minutes adopted. The next item is the approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of refunding certificates of participation Series 2016 BNC in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $259 million and the execution of related documents. Approval is contingent upon achieving a minimum estimated net present value savings of 4% of the par amount of each outstanding portion of the Series 2008D certificates being refunded or the Series 2009A certificates being refunded. It's a statement only a Goldman Sachs banker could love. So with that, can I have a motion to do what I just said? It's been moved by Ms. Cobert. It's been seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. With no further business to address, I'm adjourning the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation and reconvening the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board. All right. Board members, we are now on information from the superintendent, Dr. Jenkins.
I wanted to make the board aware that there's been a development in the denial of the Pinecrest Charter School applications. Yesterday, Pinecrest withdrew their appeal of your decision. At the same time, they resubmitted revised applications for consideration. These applications must be reviewed and voted on within 60 days. Wanted to make you aware of that. Additionally, you have copies in your inboxes of information that was given out to parents regarding the upcoming release of school grades. Wanted to make you aware of that. That information was provided to parents and to staff as well. Principals have talking points and an FAQ document that will be placed on their webpages, as they are also placed on our webpage. And then you also received, and teachers received, you received the script. Teachers received the video message from me concerning the two issues at hand. One was around the school grades, the other around the evaluation system. Said pretty succinctly in that actual communication, a very lengthy version of the description and the MOU that was agreed upon with the union around our teacher evaluation system is provided for, will be provided for you and to teachers as well. That's it, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mr. Rodriguez, any report?
No report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Budget Committee. Ms. Cato, you already made your announcement. Communications Committee.
The Communications Committee met yesterday with the superintendent and her staff to receive information about messaging, about the release of school grades. I think you're starting to see the messaging on the marquees at the schools showing that, you know, we appreciate the teachers and they're leading our students to success. So you should see those rolling out this week. We also received a report from Associate Superintendent Brandon McKelvey on a suggestion and that we're going to have some community meetings at our high schools prior to spring break discussing the school grades. So that was, there was really no action. It was really just receiving information on communications.
Thank you, Ms. Cato, for, for your leadership of that committee and work there. Ms. Flynn, Legislative.
Thank you. Last week, there were four of us who went to Tallahassee for the Florida School Board Association Conference, and then subsequently, we went and spoke with legislators. It was Mrs. Gould, Mrs. Gordon, myself, and Mrs. Cobert. So we had what we feel was a very successful visit. And I'll let everybody else give a little bit of a recap so they can hone in on some of their point, points. We met with nine legislators directly, and I think we had meetings with three representatives. Well, I shouldn't say representatives, they're, they're aides of mostly senators. So we felt that we really hit quite a good number within our local delegation. We really found that the meetings that we had done this fall locally were, had been well-received because our conversation didn't start from, from, you know, level one. We were able to take it up with, with them where they were at the time of those bills. We concentrated on the following bills. Still a very partisan atmosphere up there when it comes to education. But the choice bills that were moving forward that gave open enrollment, not just within districts, but across districts, had some troubling items that we talked about to them. The, we talked about the appropriations between traditional schools and the charter schools, and recess was a hot topic up there, and it was moving favorably through the House. The Senate was, well, at the time, it still wasn't on their calendar. And I, the advocates are working very, very hard. So like I said, it was, we felt that we gave a lot of information, and they're receptive to hearing, hearing from us. But it's very much controlled by, as, as many, many would tell us, a cartel from South Florida. One thing that came through greatly was that, excuse me? That, well, that when it came to education, the representatives from South Florida are the ones really calling the shots. That was a direct quote. They, they called it a cartel, so. You made me say it again. But Mr. Scott Howitt of OCPS is very favorably received with the legislators. Whether they agree with the topic or not, they find him a great source of information on the mechanics of education. Because we had freshman legislators tell us, hey, you know, this is, this is a lot for us to, to learn. These bills are complicated, they're complex. And Mr. Howitt and the other legislative liaisons are working very hard to present the mechanics on the local level to them, and they're working very hard. So that's what I wanted to start off with. I know the other members probably have additional input.
Got a number of people with punchabuns. Anything on the legislative report, though, before we get to other stuff? Yours, Ms. Gould, is yours on that? Okay.
One of the, the things that we heard in the update and my, my three fellow board, well, actually, Mrs. Gordon was in the update with me at FSBA, and Ms. Flynn and Ms. Cobert were in a meeting with one of the legislators, was once again highlighting the budget and the shift of lottery dollars to cover base costs rather than value-added items. And that continues to be a struggle for all school boards across the, the state. And while we will, no matter which budget comes out, it looks like we will do a little bit better on the budgetary side. It's just disheartening to see that we're, we still end up behind the eight ball in those dollars that are raised from recently some really successful lotteries can, are not being used as widely to boost our abilities to bring more to the classroom, but just cover our costs.
Thank you. Ms. Cobert, is on the legislative report? Yeah, Ms. Cobert.
Yes, thank you. And let me just back up what Mrs. Gould said about the lottery. We understand that that has been something from the very beginning that has been supplanted, as opposed to what it was sold to the taxpayers to be a supplement to education. And I think that we all, as taxpayers and as educators and as citizens, need to hold our legislators' feet to the fire on that, because that is still not right. I will say, the tenor up there, especially amongst our own delegation this year, was one of an effort to work with us, as opposed to us coming up and telling them what we don't want and being the party of no. It was a shift toward how do we work together? And we even made some suggestions on some of the bills that if, if they don't go through this year, we would like to extend the opportunity to work with them next year on amendments or rewriting those bills so that, so that together, we can work on legislation that's going to benefit our children, benefit our teachers, and our schools overall. So there was more of a welcome reception to that idea. And I think a lot of that had to do with those meetings that we made here in Orange County. For the public, the board made a special effort this year to meet with every single legislator from our local delegation in the, you know, tri or quad county area. And as Mrs. Flynn said, that laid the groundwork for them to have a fundamental understanding of how we felt about the legislation and how it really affected us, as in addition to establishing that trust level. So that when we sent Mr. Howitt in or we came in personally to say, here are the issues we have with this bill, I believe that we were heard, and I think that they're working with us to add on the amendments that we need so that we can at least live with, with some of the legislation. So I'm very pleased to talk about that. And one of the things that we worked very hard on was, there was a report that came out by the House Appropriations Committee having to, that was very critical of how districts use their capital money. And in my opinion, here in Orange County, we are particularly good stewards of that money. And the report that the House Appropriations Committee put out really was fraught with errors. Here in Orange County, superintendent sent a letter to the House, which we shared with everyone that we met with and asked them to read our memo, look at the facts. And one of the things we talked about was our local money. We are so fortunate that the taxpayers here in Orange County saw fit to trust us with that half penny sales tax. And it is my opinion that we are being very good stewards with that money in, in an effort with our COV Committee, our Citizens Oversight Committee, and the, the good work of the staff here. So it's important to me to let the public know that that's something we, we also are keeping our eye on and that we take very, very seriously. So good work on everyone's behalf and as well as the board members who did their work behind the scenes this week. As I know, they were also in contact as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobert. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you. It was a pleasure being in Tallahassee, up on the hill with so many. And it was a very productive day. I want to really thank Ms. Flynn's leadership as the Legislative Chair and Cody for being there, running up and down the halls with us. And definitely Scott Howard, who has the utmost respect. I also want to give respect to Andrea Blaine. Wayne Blanton was our former executive director. But everyone that walked in that meeting, the senators and the state representative, gave her high praises. We've never heard that before. So that means that the Florida School Board Association up in Tallahassee is gaining more support from state representatives on both sides of the aisle. And I think that is a plus because it has not always been there. It was either all Republicans or all Democrats, or independent or whatever. You're not going to, you don't see that anymore. So they are communicating with us. I thought that was great. Following last year, we did in our community an update of all of the representatives in our group from the national level, with the United States Senator and Congressmen, with the local state senators, and we plan to do this again. And right after the conference is over, where we update all of our schools on what is happening within our community. And we go all the way down to the local level with how our even commissioners. So that came out of a legislative piece that we want to continue to do in School Board District 5. What I gained from the conference with my colleague was very, very productive. And going in the meeting, we met with, I did attend the FSBA update, and that was very, very productive, as Ms. Flynn and I think Ms. Cobert and, no, Ms. Gould. I was with Ms. Gould in the update that we stayed, but you all went over to your representative, which was good. So I really, they went over to Representative Cortez, which was very productive. But I thought it was just unbelievable to hear how a lot of, they gave their passion. Every one of the state representative that came in gave their passion, and I think we need to listen more. I know we are up there trying to push our agenda, but it doesn't do any good to push your agenda when you're not listening to how they feel. Several of the representatives told us that on certain bills that we lobbied them on, they are looking at those who went to Tallahassee. Who's in their office crying? Who's begging and asking? And that basically is the way that representative is going to go. So it's like the squeaky wheel gets the oil. We have got to be visible. We've got to be the squeaky wheel. We have got to build that relationship before we get to Tallahassee. And I know Ms. Gould, representative, shared with her how, they called her name a couple of times. Mine was called in the Appropriation Education Committee by Representative Torres and Representative Bruce Anton because they are letting them know at the state level we already have a relationship with our representatives. I think that's highly commendable on our part. One thing that touched me in the, in the update was billions of dollars are being lost in the driver's aid. I want us to go back, Superintendent Jenkins, and take a look at that driver's aid, even though Orange County, we offer that and we make a commitment, but we don't have it on our campus. There was a bill that got wiped out, totally wiped out. And Scott can give you that information. I didn't get the bill number down, but Ms. Gould and I know the representative that asked us to help him, his daughter got killed. And they, they had a twin. And he got that bill in and school systems. I think we got $400,000 for that driver's aid bill because they had to pay an extra $5. And with all of the things happening in Orange County, I believe, Orange County Public School benefited, even though we still have the kids to reap the benefit. But I would like to see, Dr. Jenkins, you take a look into that bill with the representative, see how we can maybe reinstate that bill and what we can do to help them so that the school districts, that's a loss of money to the school district. So that was very, very important. And Ms. Gould may want to come in a little bit more on it. I'll give you to see you about it. We did get in to see Representative Torres. He's the only one voted against the autonomy bill, which I spoke to, I spoke to Representative Diaz following the education appropriation. The autonomy bill is where you have a failing school. And they want to give that principal carte blanche, where that principal could go in and pick who they want, don't even have to go through the superintendent. Oh, no, 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 not in my district. Oh, no, 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 not in my district. I, I could not see that kind of thing happening because sometime my principals are the cause of we being where we are in my district. I'm gonna ask you for a few more seconds if my board member would allow me to do it. Thank you, because this is important. I do not feel, our superintendent is a constitutional officer by the state of Florida. She's responsible for principals. Principals can't just go and just ignore. So I did make that clear. I stayed in there and talked to Diaz until they put us out. I would like Dr. Jenkins for you all to follow up on that bill. We asked him to see, it, it just passed that committee, but it's headed on out the door. But I did commend him. It's only gonna be so many districts, I think it started with nine and now there will be 20, where there are failing schools and the principals of the schools can go in and pick their staff. No, because I've seen that happen in my district. We had 11 S's because principals were picking their friends and doing what they wanted to do and none of the kids were understanding what was going on. So Dr. Jenkins, that is a key bill that we have got to follow. We gotta make sure that, I think I told Scott that we do not get hooked up, that the principals are the ones that are doing the superintendent's job. So that, that is, they can help in some way, they can give their expertise. We did get to see Representative Miller. He is really, I don't want to say he's on one party, but he really votes another, you know, like us. So those of us who know who I am with my party. I just think that he was very, very supportive of us. We did get in with Representative Sullivan and gave her our point of view on the documents that Ms. Flynn and Cody and Scott had put together. Also, I have provided a link to the FSBA Board Doc page in, in here on 19.01, and you can review all the information. I also put in our choice for Orange County. We did get into, and she was a joy. She didn't know us until we got in her office. She knew Pam in the luncheon and then in the breakfast, but didn't know Pam in the office, then she knew me in the office, which was so funny. But Senator Stargell, and she gave us a lot of points and everything that we went up there and asked, she stated that she was with us. And also Senator Geraldine Thompson. She, she stated that they, she also had license plates that she was able to get past for Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. So I thought I'd throw that out there to the Alpha Women and Friends. And then the big, the biggest thing was how we were able to get in. But our team was very busy trying to catch Placentia?
Placentia.
Placentia, one of our teachers. And, and an incident happened right after our delegation spoke with him. They rushed him out.
I hope it wasn't our fault.
Okay, they rushed him out. It wasn't our fault. I hope it wasn't our fault. But they rushed him out. I think he's okay, he's progressing. So I do want you to pray for that family. And I did tell you, we saw Bruce Anton. And Bruce, let me tell you what Bruce Anton said. It was so funny. State Representative Bruce Anton said, we don't have to really worry about him with educational issues because what Scott Howard tells him to do for OCPS, that is what he's doing. So I thought that was a cute statement that he made. So that was basically some of the highlights of several of the people that we visited. It was a very busy day. I did get to go meet the new executive director, Dennis, I think, it's Marty? What's Marty's last name?
Shaq.
What is it?
Shaq.
Shaq.
Shaq? Okay, I, I took time, Darrell and we're going, they were going back to the hotel so they can get on the road. And I said, let me go get their feel on recess and get their feel on teacher evaluation and, and all the good things. So I did get to meet, and they would like to meet us, you know, so I don't know how we're gonna make that happen. But he's the new executive director. I still can't think of his last name, Marty?
Shaq.
Shaq. And I have his card. Okay, okay, so it was very interesting to talk with them and the staff, and they, they were on the, on the floor as well, going up and down. So I spent quite a bit of time in there, you know, talking with the FEA as it relates to the teacher evaluation and helping us to fight that and what you brought up tonight in reference to paying the best and the brightest, where some are left out and, and some are not. State Representative Torres, I voted against Diaz's bill on the autonomy because he feels that it, and I had to look at it another way. It's better to give some people some time than no time at all. You know, I give them some money than no money. You don't want the money to go to waste. So he stated, Dr. Jenkins, that he would try to get Orange County on that list next year. Okay? So let's see if we could work that out. Thank you for the extra, extra time. And I had a wonderful trip up there with Darrell and Colbert and Pam. Thank you.
All right, we're still on the Legislative Committee and report and agenda. Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to potentially have a discussion, maybe Dr. Jenkins could shed some more light on these dueling letters coming back and forth between a representative president and superintendent. And we're blessed to have her as the president of the Superintendent Association. And so there was an assertion made in a letter response back to you that, that districts are not transparent in our, our spending with regard to capital expenses. And I thought maybe you could just review for us all the ways that Mr. Morris's shop and the Facilities Department are accountable and are transparent to the public.
Dr. Jenkins?
So rather than go into a lengthy discussion, that document that we provided to our local delegation, we will certainly make sure the media has access to it as well. Here's the important thing to remember. We asserted, superintendents throughout the state asserted that statements that were made in that committee were inaccurate and that there was a broad brush paint allegation that districts were not making good use, that they were wasting taxpayer dollars. And that is just not true. It's not supported. So if you have, for example, if you have a school that's doing a renovation and part of that renovation is, I believe the example was a media center, and then there may have been some other larger portions, larger buildings that were being renovated, well, student stations that were counted in the media center were a very small portion of the overall renovation for that particular district. So to do a simple division project on that and say every student station then cost enormous amounts of dollars is misleading. You can't just do a straight mathematical calculation. More importantly, for Orange County, we found that there were a couple of instances from Mr. Morris's shop, they found they were reporting some schools that were not under renovation projects for that particular year. So we thought there were some errors as well. In general, the response we received back was certainly what the association expected. Here in Orange County, and I believe my colleagues throughout the state, we are committed to making sure taxpayer dollars are spent very frugally. We have an outside oversight committee for our taxpayer dollars. Those aren't even to be a part of the calculation, those are, and renovations really shouldn't be a part of the calculation if you saw our response. It is supposed to be for new schools and the cost of student stations. So all of this mixing of data and some errors, we believe, in data just really presented a misleading picture for that general statement to me, to be made about the waste of taxpayers' dollars. So we took offense as an association, and here in Orange County, we were very concerned. We want our taxpayers to understand we're very frugal in how we expend those dollars. And we have an outside oversight committee that makes sure taxpayer dollars that aren't under that, our one-half penny sales tax dollars that aren't under that particular requirement are watched over very closely.
Legislative Committee still.
I was just gonna give you the bill that Ms., Mrs. Gordon was talking about. It's the Dory Schlossberg Drivers Education Safety Act. And it, and in 2002, it enabled counties, I guess it's optional in the counties, to tack on $5 to every traffic violation that goes into a pot for driver's ed. And he was trying to increase it and is still trying to do that. But I, I'm not sure if that's where our driver's ed funding came from and if we're a participating county. I was trying to find it and I can't.
No.
That might be something to look into.
Yeah, they'll look into it because we, we get something according to what someone told me, but I didn't, I don't have facts on it, but we get something. But we're doing it, our kids get driver's ed. So thank you for the bill.
All right, Ms. Cadel Strong, Legislative Committee report.
Well, and I love hearing that, that Andrea Messina is doing an excellent job because, as you all know, I spent many trips up to Tallahassee and I was on that hiring committee. So, but one of the things I want to encourage anyone who's watching and my fellow members, FSBA does a weekly update and one of, and it's a video update. And Executive Director Messina has been taping it this year over in the Capitol. And she also has been working through the process of how do boroughs work, you know, how do they become law, what things they're looking for. So if you're looking for another way to understand what's going on in Tallahassee, it's, it's a weekly update while the legislature is in session. And it, you can go to the fsba.org website and look for that weekly update.
Thank you. Great points, Ms. Cadel. All right, board members, Mrs. Gordon, FSBA report.
Just gave it.
You just gave it. Okay, okay.
So see, that takes up the other time I used.
There we go.
So don't.
You did a two for, good for you.
Get me on that.
I don't ever do that.
Two for one.
Okay. All right, board members, we're on agenda item 20. You know, I, I had queued up on this and, you know, I, I don't want to, where do I start? I, I don't want to poison the well at all because I thought the public comment portion of our meeting, and I know we all have strong feelings on this issue, but from where I sit, it was, it was very good. I thought the testimony was professional, as I would always expect it to be because I knew most of the people speaking and they're always professional. I thought it was substantive. I thought it was, you know, from my perspective, democracy at its best. It's why we're here is to listen to the public, sometimes even if it's things that we do or don't want to hear. I will say this, so I want to make a couple of comments on that. First of all, I do want to point out that the teacher evaluation system that we are under here in Orange County was collectively bargained with our CTA and with our union. It was agreed to by the union. And it is something that can be collaboratively bargained by the union on an ongoing basis, year in and year out. As pleased as I was with the public comment, and I want to couch my words carefully because I, I cannot stomach politicians who lecture or preach, it's, you know, I try very hard not to do that. And it's not my place to do that, and I really feel very strongly about that. All that being said, the handout that I'm looking at that was given is really quite contrary to the level of the testimony that we heard earlier in the public comment. It says, let me read some of the phrases, condemns indictment of OCPS teachers. That OCPS began an intentional effort to degrade Orange County teachers and debase any pretense of an objective evaluation system. We've held OCPS teachers up for ridicule. We're downgrading and insulting OCPS teachers. And it's time for the superintendent, the school board, and ELC to show some respect for the people who do the work and to apologize for the travesty they have made of teacher evaluations. You know, again, it was collectively bargained. I think that's particularly harsh language, especially when one considers that last year when we collaboratively bargained a new labor agreement with our teachers, it included a 6.5% raise over two years, which at the time was among the highest in the state. And it also had a re opener in it, that it could be reopened at any time depending on changing budget conditions. I'd also point out that while we with complete fidelity tried to implement the teacher observation system, we also realized that in the year prior to that, that, and it's why we had such an exceedingly high number, I don't want to say it's why, but it's to the benefit of teachers, of highly effective teachers the year before as a baseline. And this really gets into the weeds on policy and it's very complicated. And unless you're waiting in this policy, I doubt many people will understand this, but I think our union reps will. But I also want to point out that for every teacher, starting this year going forward, who is evaluated as highly effective, every dollar of salary increase, and this is a fact that's lost on many, but it was not lost on the legislature because what they did was deviously brilliant, and what they did, salaries go up just with the natural progression of inflation in new dollars each and every year. Every teacher who's highly effective by law has to get 50% more than an effective teacher going forward. So when you are upset about there being a low percentage of highly effective teachers, when we put in additional, whether it's making up numbers to make my point, 10 million or 20 million, 5 million, 25 million, whatever it is into that pot, you need to realize that those teachers who are highly effective, every year that they are highly effective will get 50% more than effective teachers of that raised pool. Now, for one year, that may not be a big deal. Teacher A, who's highly effective, who's a 12-year teacher, might get a raise of, I'm making up numbers to make my point, might get a raise of, if they're an effective teacher, let's just say $500. And teacher B, who's a highly effective teacher, is going to get $750 that year. But as you compound that over five, six, 10 years, you can sit there and you can do the math yourself, that highly effective teacher after five or 10 years, at the same level of experience, is going to be making literally multiples of what that effective teacher is making if they were effective each and every year. So I think sometimes it's incumbent upon both the board and the administration and the union to make sure that our teachers understand the merit pay structure that has been forced upon us and to understand the compounding effect of having those teachers who are highly effective get 50% more in pay each and every year that they go forward. And that's something that when we were in our sessions, that we discussed and that we were very cognizant of and that concerns us immensely. And I'll be very candid, I don't think that 98% of the teachers out there, unless they're active in the union or on the negotiating teams, understand that just yet. And I say that because when I sit down and I talk to teachers about it, it's really not even on their radar screen, and I talk to teachers all, all the time. Last thing I'm going to say is, and this is not meant personally at all, it is what it is and, and it's nobody in this room's fault. But I really pray that both CTA and OESPA, and I don't know the timing of it, I've asked around and I met with some of our union reps the other day and didn't really directly ask this, but we, we really are eagerly anticipating the time when we get back to when we have a elected board, I don't want to say elected board, elected leadership of OESPA and, and CTA. Because, you know, it's, when we have the professionals come in and we have them and minister of the union, it's wonderful because they're professionals for a reason and they're sent to various parts of the country for a reason because of their expertise. But they don't know the culture of Orange County Public Schools, they don't know the community of Orange County Public Schools. And I'll be very, very candid, I don't think an elected president who is here year in and year out in union leadership would have put out this kind of language. Because it's really not reflective of the collaborative atmosphere and the cooperative atmosphere that we've had with our teachers. So appreciate you all allowing me to say those words. Dr. Jenkins, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to make just a couple of comments. I appreciate your comments around collective bargaining. And I was cautioned earlier by council not to appear to be trying to bargain at the table. But I do want the board to understand these matters were discussed extensively in collective bargaining. And so what we're going to release to teachers includes the actual MOU. Now, was there any way to know the actual final impact compared to the rest of the state? Absolutely not. We didn't know what other districts were going to look like until the state released their information last year. But it is certainly a matter that can be continually But it is certainly a matter that can be continually discussed in collective bargaining. But we're going to release all of the numbers, the actual deliberate practice add-ons for the previous year and then the new negotiated numbers for deliberate practice for the following year. And I will tell you, when we look at the actual teacher evaluations, the previous year, there would have been no teachers without that extra credit add-on that would have been in highly effective. It was the add-on that blew those numbers up. This past year, 120 teachers without the deliberate practice would have been highly effective. So that sort of runs counter to some of the allegations that you may have heard earlier. But all of that is in the memorandum from Mr. Howard that will be coming to you. And then we're trying to condense it. I will tell you, it will make you glaze over after a while. The actual documents are there though for anyone who wants to review them at length. And then we will have a version that goes out to all of our teachers as well. We purposely tried to keep it very brief in my video message. But those that want to see the lengthy or MOU that was agreed upon and the numbers and the actual way that it's calculated will be provided to all of our teachers as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Dr. Jenkins, can I also ask that you have your negotiating team put together, both for the board and for the union representatives? I'd like to see a side-by-side comparison of teacher A and teacher B, who start at a 10-year level or wherever they're at in the range, and where they would be after 10 years, assuming, you know, make some fair assumptions based on historical, the precedent of how much the increases go up, and have teacher A be an effective teacher for all 10 years and teacher B be a highly effective teacher. I think we need to start illustrating the spread and the difference in salary after 10 years of that practice. Mrs. Robinson?
I actually wanted to change to another topic and I noticed someone else had pushed their button. Oh, there's not anyone.
I do want this topic.
Okay, well, the same topic?
Same topic.
Well, then continue and then I'll change, rather than change topics.
Okay, well, I'd run out of time. I didn't want to keep going over. But I will say this, and I've shared this before. And, you know, it's tough because we get admonished very strongly up here not to bargain from the table. And I know the union does too, and we're dealing with pros and they respect that. You know, I met with the union recently and not one of them brought up a collaborative bargaining issue. And I want to thank them for that. But I do want to say that, you know, two things. Number one, I think I'm pretty comfortable saying this for the board. I think sometimes the union perhaps has the impression that we just march in lockstep with the administration on everything that's put before us. And that's what's so hard about the collaborative bargaining process because we meet in executive session. I can assure our teachers and our unions, we do not always march in lockstep. Now, the administration has, I think, the best interest of educators at heart. They are, after all, educators themselves. They certainly have the best interests of OESPA at heart. But so does the board. And sometimes it may be a fine point. Sometimes it may be a salary point. Sometimes it may be a policy point. I can assure you, we have very independent, strong voices in those bargaining sessions. And on that point, and I know the superintendent cannot say much about it. I just want to make a statement. I've long had heartburn over the classroom observations component of Marzano. And I've said that over and over and over again. And I've said it publicly. And I'm saying it now from this board table, you know, and I don't harbor any illusions. I don't think more than a half dozen people and my wife watch these meetings at home. But I'm saying it from this board table. And to be honest, my wife doesn't watch these from home either. But my point is, you know, I'd like, you know, I just want to make that statement. And frankly, I'm going to continue to advocate that we look at the classroom observation component. I think it's a necessary component to a limited extent. But I think we can alter it and I think we have it within our statutory authority to modify it. And I've said over and over again, the one common complaint I get from teachers over and over and over again is the volume and the intrusiveness of the observations. And I want to say it's not consistent from school to school. I think some principals handle it very, very well. Other principals perhaps not as well. But that's the downside of school-based management. We have 186 traditional school principals. And frankly, if even two dozen of them out of 186 are not handling it well, that's two dozen more than I think need to be mishandling it. So I guess I'll close by saying this. I will continue to advocate that that's something we look at, that we try to minimize that impact. I don't want to give the wrong impression. I think every principal belongs walking into a classroom two or three times a year. That's one thing. And I think they belong sitting in that classroom two, three times a year for as much as 20, 30, 40 minutes, to the extent their schedule can accommodate that. But the level of observations and my understanding of the amount of them and because of a principal, especially at a larger school, the amount of teachers they have, it becomes almost, you know, a drive-through more than anything else, you know? Where you have to drive through, you go in, spend 10 minutes. And I don't fault the principals for that. You know, you're at a school with 85 teachers, 110 teachers, and you're expected to make X numbers of observations here. It's very, very difficult. So that's my two cents on that. I just wanted to say that because I think that is a valid criticism and it's one that I hear quite often. And I do hope that we will look at it as an administration and as a collaboratively bargained item. Mrs. Robinson?
Okay, I wanted to change topics a little bit and address and ask questions of the superintendent. We had another public speaker this evening prior to our board meeting that wasn't talking about the same topic that we just discussed. But they were asking about, for FSA testing purposes, for parents that want to minimally participate in FSA, would the district do a directive on that, giving instructions to the schools on what the students could do at that time that do not minimally? It's hard to say minimally participate. Do you, can you answer what our current practice is and what will be happening?
I've been talking with individual board members. We don't have a plan to change what is currently in place and what we had in place last year. As constitutional officers, students who are in attendance are supposed to take the test. And so we've not made a provision, nor do we have the staff for pulling students out and supervising them in a separate room or a separate building. If this board directs me to do otherwise, we'll certainly look at trying to get some additional staff on hand. But that is not our intention. In fact, we responded to her, Brandon McKelvey, Dr. McKelvey actually responded to her when she had the written request that at this point, we have no plans to do anything differently than last year. He also included with her the link to the National PTA statement that said they were, that they do not support the opt-out movement, that they encourage parents to have their children participate. And so as I've talked with individual board members, I've gotten no indication that we were going to change our procedures from last year.
As a follow-up, can I ask what happens if a student doesn't show up and take the FSA? Any of the days during the FSA?
They're coded as absent. If they come during the makeup period, then they're offered to take the test at that time.
I seem to remember I had a constituent at one of my schools years ago that withheld their child through all of it and even through the makeup period. What happens then? Say a parent chooses that.
That's a parent's choice. We certainly don't have any way of commandeering what a parent decides to do with their child before they get on campus. In fact, if they don't want their children to take the test, that might be the easiest if they want to make it simple and easy for their child not to be an outlier or to stand out among his peers. That might be the easiest way to do it. I don't encourage it. I encourage parents to participate. But if a parent keeps a child home, there's nothing we can do about it.
And then back, I mean, this was years ago. So it was when FCAT, in particular, this child that I'm referring to was in third grade. If you didn't pass the FCAT in third grade, you weren't allowed to move on. And I believe with FSA, that's still that practice. And there's other things that have to be resolved. Do we have another form of assessing that child to give them the ability to move forward from third grade or 10th grade or whatever?
There is for third grade. For 10th grade, that graduation requirement, that remains questionable. I would be concerned about that. But for third graders, if they do not, if they are considered to have not passed the FSA, then schools can consider looking at another type of portfolio or giving them a different standardized test. Actually, that's the first step that can be used for children who have not passed the FSA. Or then looking at a portfolio of other work products to try to see if they should be promoted.
And just following up again, on that thought process, the portfolio, if a parent knew at the beginning of the year that they probably were going to have their child not participate and they requested of their teacher and they kind of have a conversation with them and said, "I'm going to not have my child participate. Can we start a portfolio?" Do we have schools that do portfolios already? Or is that something someone would have to ask for? How does that work?
Yeah, they don't do it, they don't do it already. If you recall, last year, there was one school that was just going to do it for everyone. There was a big complaint about that as well. So they wouldn't normally just collect portfolios. But I want to be clear, the first step, I believe, according to DOE, is that you use another standardized assessment
Okay.
for those children. So consider a student who hasn't passed and we're trying to see if they can be promoted to third grade. They do some summer camp training. Those students take another standardized test to see if they can then be promoted. And so the first step for students who have not passed the FSA would be another standardized assessment and then to look at portfolio and work product.
Okay.
But we don't do that preemptively or start collecting portfolios at the beginning of the school year.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of have that conversation so that anyone that happens to be viewing
Absolutely.
could be thinking about what they really do and don't want to do come FSA time for their child.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rodriguez, did you have an announcement to make?
I do. Mr. Chair, members of the board, with apologies. I had to read an executive session announcement that we have scheduled for after our next board meeting. So the School Board of Orange County, Florida, will meet in an executive session to discuss settlement in the matter of Southern Atlantic Companies et al. versus School Board of Orange County, Florida, on February 23, 2015, immediately following the regularly scheduled school board meeting to start at 5:30 PM on February 16, 2015. The executive session will take place on the ninth floor in the superintendent's conference room at the Ronald Blocker Educational Leadership Center, located at this address at Orlando, Florida. The following persons may be in attendance. All members of the school board. Dr. Barbara Jenkins as superintendent, myself as general counsel, John Palmorini as associate general counsel, and Mr. Brian Kerwin and Doug Ackerman as outside counsel, along with a court reporter. As board members know, we need to make this announcement in order to have the executive session meeting, which is closed to members of the public. But we do, of course, keep transcripts of those proceedings for when litigation is concluded. Thank you.
All right, board members, good meeting. It's only 7:13. Very good meeting. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, with that, we are adjourned.